Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone in our studio audience here, as well as those at home, to the November 18th meeting of the Patton Township Board of Directors. I would like to note that throughout the meeting, if anybody has a question or comment, they can call. I believe there's a number, telephone number right in front of me, and there's an email on the agenda. So I called a meeting to order, if I didn't use those words exactly, and now I would like to invite those who are able to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this point, we invite comments from members of the public who want to address the board, but not on topics that are already on the agenda. Are there any comments that are outside the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations and public hearings, and the only one that we have on the docket tonight is, oh, we have two, the budget and tax local match shares. So we'll start with the budget, and I believe that means we start with Mr. Pager, who is our financial director, finance and administration. It does say that we are to review the materials, but I think we usually just go right into their presentation.
Yeah, I'll do a small review of what we went through last week.
Sounds good.
Last week on November 11th, we did the presentation of the proposed budget and a tentative adoption, or we adopted the tentative budget. This week, we're going to have a public hearing and a work session on the 2021 budget, and then on December 9th, if all goes well, and we don't have any major changes, we will do a final adoption of the CIP in the 2021 budget. The budget, as of last week, when we did the preparation of the proposed budget, the budget needed to be advertised. It was advertised in Monday's Center Daily Times. It was stated in an advertisement that we would have a public hearing and a work session at this meeting today. It also stated that the budget is available for public inspection for the next 20 days in the township offices here at 100 Patton Plaza. Also, it is available at the Sklo Center Region Library, and it is available on our website at twp.pattin.paa.us. Just to go over quickly, the proposed tax rates for 2021, there's no increase in the real estate taxes in the proposed budget. The real estate taxes remain at 8.9 mils for real estate and 6 tenths of a mil for open space preservation. The earned income tax remains at a half a percent. The local services tax remains at $52, and the real estate transfer tax remains at one-half a percent. The earned income tax, the local services tax, and the real estate transfer tax are all at their current maximum rate permitted by the state. The breakdown of the 9.5 mils of total tax is 6.2 for mills for general fund, 1.2 mils for current debt, 6 tenths of a mil for open space debt, 4 tenths of a mil for library fund, 7 tenths of a mil for parks capital improvements, and 4 tenths of a mil for the fire fund. The budget for revenues is approximately $13.4 million. That's 4.4 million in real estate taxes, about $297,000 in tax for open space preservation, 2.4 million for earned income tax, 959,000 for other taxes, 2.3 million for intergovernmental payments, 2.2 million for pass-through grants, and 855,000 for non-tax sources. Our expenditures are budgeted to approximately $15 million. That's 1.4 million for general government services, 3.4 million for police, 4.6 million for public works, 1.4 million for community services, planning and zoning in Parks and Rec, 1.1 million for community services other, the 2.2 million for pass-through grants, 579,000 for debt service, and 245,000 for the open space debt service. With the $13.4 million revenue and $15 million expenditures, we're expecting a use of funds of $1.6 million. That leaves us with a year-end cash balance of about $1.1 million, which is 7.34% of our operating expenditures, which is a little bit under our goal of 8 to 12%. But I think we can, we'll be okay with that. The last item is the personnel costs and benefits. In the proposed budget, there's a 1.7% COLA for non-uniformed employees. The COLA for 2020 was 2.4, and the COLA for 2019 was 2.2, so it's down a little. That's based off of the CPIU at August 2020, less food and energy. The 1.25 merit increase for non-uniformed employees at their anniversary date is in the proposed budget. The police contract has a three-year, 3.25 increase per year until the end of 2022. An employee contribution to health care for non-uniform, it's 12%, and for uniform, it's 9%. As I stated before, this meeting is for the public hearing and the work session, December 9th, if everything goes well, we don't have to re-advertise, we can do the final adoption of the CIP in the budget. And thank you very much. I'll take any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Does that mean questions from the board, and/or should I open the public?
I think at this point, you should open the public hearing and announce your public input.
Let's do it. I would like to open the public hearing for comments on the 2021 budget. Do I, I don't know if I have to hit the hammer. It's officially open. Any comments from the public on the budget?
Anything on the email, Larry?
Mm-hmm.
No, just that Betsy was waiting to get in.
Anything?
Is anybody in at this point?
So, no, there's nothing on the emails.
Okay. So, any additional comments from the board? I know we addressed this last week.
We should close the public hearing and move to the board work session.
Oh, okay. Perfect, thank you. Seeing no comments from the fellow, or I will simply close the public hearing and now turn it over to the board for any additional comments. We have all discussed this at the previous meeting, we've read this. If you have a hand up, please shout out, because it's kind of hard to see hands up. The only comment I have to make is, again, congratulations and thank you for a well-put-together report, and thank you especially for the work you did to go through various, you know, many areas to reduce expenses on items so that we would not have to have a tax increase, which was very important to all five of us board members.
You're welcome.
So I'm guessing we're all happy campers, and?
If there's no comments or additional directions from the board, we'll have this budget on the December 9th agenda for final approval.
And you advertise that again, is that correct?
No, we don't need to advertise it again unless there was a major change.
Only if there were changes.
Unless there was no change, that would automatically fall in the non-major category.
All right. So we invite everybody to join us on the December 9th meeting for the final approval. Thank you very much. And we don't need a motion for that, correct?
No.
Okay. We were intending to, oh, I see Luana is here from Catawba. So our next item is the Catawba 2021-22 Local Match Shares. The general manager, Luana Oliva, Oliva, I don't know if I'm saying that right, is here. She's going to give us a brief presentation on the calculations of the contributions for each municipality, and allow us to ask questions, and we'll take it from there. So Luana, I'd like to introduce you and have you take the mic.
Hopefully, I am unmuted.
You are.
Great, thank you. So as I'm sure that you have just been done, have been just discussing, it's been an interesting year. So Catawba is actually coming to the number municipalities this year to talk about, for the period of at least a year, moving away from our typical Cataformia. So just to give you a little background information, since spring break, Catawba has been working through multiple levels of service, not only to stay safe, but also to meet the needs of the community. And, you know, as you can imagine, back in the early days of this pandemic, sometimes our service was changing more than once a week, as there were, you know, in the early days, there were a lot of governor's orders that were coming out pretty quickly. So we already knew, and had talked to actually last year, about the fact that in the future, we thought it would be two years from now, that in the future, we would likely have to come back and revisit the Cata formula due to our micro-transit pilot that we were going through. But we're still in the pilot project, that pilot project. So within, when we started looking at all of the different service changes that had happened, and the fact that we just didn't yet have a good way to know what was going to happen. to happen with micro-transit, whether it's going to be permanent, we haven't made any of those decisions yet, we ran a practice CATA formula because we were very concerned that all of these service changes were going to cause some pretty significant swings in the CATA formula. And when we did run that practice CATA formula, we did see that that was happening. And in particular, what was happening because of micro-transit and not having that sort of figured out as well, along with the level of service that we've had to cut back, and I can talk a little bit about where we are with some of those things when we're done here. We were seeing, in particular, that the swings were going towards the member municipality and pretty much every single member municipality was going up double digits. So, if you, just a couple of reminders about local match and how we come to you every, every year. Typically, we're here about a month before now, but we've been working through all of that. But if you remember, local match, it's really what we call local match shares because there's a certain amount that our community is, is legislated to actually contribute. And so, and it's 5% a year is where we are until you reach a 15% match of the state funding. We were at, for a number of years, we were underfunded and so we're in a catch-up mode. So, we're just going up every year 5%. That 5% is not based on the service that is offered, it's not based on our budget, it's a legislative file. And so, what that, that local match does then is it's matched with our state funding and then that is matched with our federal funding. So, one of the graphs that you saw shows the amount of local match and then how much that leverages in funding for CADA to operate. And that's a lot of the reason that CADA can operate without being at a, you know, you, the, typically, the local match is about 3% of our budget versus, you know, some of the agencies that you support might be much higher. So, I wanted to touch on that really quickly, but I ended up speaking with the municipal managers a few weeks ago, talking about the impacts of COVID and our service changes on the local match. And the group agreed that I should go ahead and approach the elected officials with the concept of instead of running the CATA formula this year, that we would just take everyone's numbers from last year and add 5%. That that was probably the fairest way to go about this, to meet our legislated amounts that we needed to do. So, that's what I'm here today about, to see if you have any questions about this concept and anything else that you might want to know about. And again, these would, this is for, we're typically coming out this time of year so you know what we're, what would be expected for your budgeting. This wouldn't actually go into effect until next July because our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. And I talked really fast and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Luana. I'm going to ask board members if they have a question to please shout out because again, I can only see a couple of, oh, there we go. Any questions for Luana or comments? I see Ms. Robb, yes.
Luana, I only, the only question I have is what are the other municipalities agreeing with? Are they having a problem with the 5% or are they all in agreement? I don't think we, you'll have a problem with us.
You folks are first up. So, like I said, when I spoke with the municipal managers, they, they seemed to believe that this was probably a good approach for this year. It's similar to what the federal government is doing with us for our funding. For transit systems, they're actually going to hold our ridership numbers because a lot of our funding at the federal level is based on the service we run, the ridership, and if they changed based on what we're, what we're dealing with right now, it would just decimate our funding. So, they have agreed that for a two-year period, they're just going to use our numbers that existed before COVID so that we have a chance to hopefully come out of these impacts and get some normalization.
Thank you. Good, yeah, good question. Luana, you probably don't know the answer to this any more than any one of the other national people involved in mitigating COVID, but any guess on when some normalcy would return? I'm guessing once the vaccine is up and running and distributed widely. Is that your hope?
That is our hope and I will also say, being a university system, the university systems across the country are actually getting hit much harder than, say, the city systems. As you can imagine, so much of what we do here in the community is based on what happens at Penn State.
Right.
And the level of classes that are being done online, the fact that we're still sort of being asked.
A no-knock ban and I might clarify that it's, there's a difference between a no-knock warrant, which is the term that is out there, and a no-knock search. So, we will be discussing both with emphasis on the latter. And I, I do want to preface this discussion by saying that, as, as many of you all know, this is part of a national conversation that has been going on regarding policing. In my personal view, and I believe the members of the board share this, it is no negative reflection on Patton Township Police Force, which we have now gotten to know in quite a bit of detail, more than I ever even thought was there in the last several months as we have had several discussions at board meetings and we've had several work sessions discussing many aspects of the police department. My esteem in them has, has only risen. But that is not to say that there is not room for improvement, room for open discussion. So, that is why we are looking at this at our, at our meetings and in work sessions. So, with that, Doug, I think I'm going to, I'll have you take it from there.
Yeah, thank you. Make sure we got it up to right. So, I have the agenda up on, on the screen now. I'm not going to go back through the process. I think everybody who's here today is fairly familiar where, where we started with Mr. Jones's recommendation and where we are, how we got to today. First, I want to say this is not our intended last discussion on this subject.
Right.
So, what we have is a draft recommendation from Chief Jolly and I. We've sent that back out into the world to the agencies who originally commented to us, plus looking for more public input and also looking for more input from the board supervisors. So, I just want to start with talking about no-knock search warrants. And there's been a lot of talk about search warrants, especially with the case of Breonna Taylor in Kentucky. Unlike Kentucky, Pennsylvania does not permit no-knock search warrants. If you look at Title 234, Rules of Criminal Procedure, Chapter 2, explicitly says that police officers must knock and announce their purpose before they can enter a residence and there's a waiting period and some other details. So, unlike what people were talking about in Kentucky, where a judge can authorize police officers to go into a house without knocking and announcing, that is not permitted in Pennsylvania. So, I want to start with that separation of issues. Now, under Section 234, Chapter 2, there are some exceptions to those and we'll talk about those in a little bit. But for tonight, I want to start by talking about tasers and?
About what?
Tasers.
Tasers, I thought that's what you said. Thank you.
Maybe I'll unmask just for this part of it.
Okay.
And make sure. Going back into the mid 2000s, 2006, '07, the police chief started talking to me at the manager about deploying tasers. They were fairly new at the time, they were quite controversial. There was a lot of information in the media about them, primarily about the misuse and the abuse of tasers and how a lot of that came from poor training. What we did in Patton Township was go through a very thorough review that included board members, police department members, members of the public, and looked at all the information that was out there about, about tasers. Took about a year to do that review. At the end of the, at the end of that review, the ad hoc committee came back and recommended that tasers are an effective tool for police department to reduce injuries, both for police officers and the people they deal with, and they should be deployed with thorough training of the police officers. And that's what we ended up doing. And I go through that to say, part of the messaging that came out of that whole process to the department was the eyes of the community and the eyes of the board are on you. And we, you know, we know this is important, this is a valuable tool for you, use it correctly. So, today, we use tasers, the department has tasers, they train on them yearly, we have reporting requirements. Part of what that committee that put together the report on tasers also put together the training program on tasers. So, it went through quite a review also. So, we train today. Chief, Chief Jolly reports whenever we have a deployment. We monitor what goes on, the training gets revised as needed and we go through that, that cycle again and again. And I wanted to talk about that because it leads me to one of the points that's not written in the, in the, in the recommendation report, but I wanted to relay to you. What we have found, or what I have found, and these are my personal opinions of having worked here at the township since, you know, since 2006 as manager, is that the Patton Township Police Department is a well-trained, professional force and they're dedicated to doing it right. And I truly, truly believe that. That's not in my report because I wasn't sure that was something that should go in the report, but it's something I wanted to relay to you that's probably as much a reason why we come to the recommendation we, we do, that the police officer in Patton Township are going to continue to do the right thing because that's what they have a long history of doing. So, with that, I'll go back to our recommendation, noting that no-knock warrants are not permitted in Penn, in Pennsylvania. There are exceptions, as are noted in, under case law. That includes four exceptions, the one we're going to probably talk about tonight is the last one that's, that's in the list of exceptions and that's the right to enter without announcement if police have reason to believe that evidence is about to be destroyed. And we'll set that aside for, for a little bit. We do have a policy in the police department that covers search warrants. On page two of the recommendation, I noted a few sections that specifically talk to, about search warrants. And you're going to see that our recommendation thinks that we probably need to beef up this policy in terms of the current law. So, our recommendation from Chief Jolly and I is that we revise Policy 1.2.3, Search and Seizure, to include the following items. That Item F, which refers, that requires that we follow state law and federal law. Again, that's that Title 234, Rule 207, Rules of Criminal Evidence. So, that, Section F1 is actually the last thing in the policy. So, the first thing we want to do is move that, Section F1, to the beginning of the policy. So, the first thing that we tell officers is you must follow all current laws. We also want to reinforce within the written policy and in the training, those rules, again, Title 234, Chapter 2, Section A, and emphasize the issues of knock-and-announce requirements, exceptions to knock-and-announce. And then one of the items that Mr. Jones did point out, that's been involved, been included in other, in other, in other policies around the country, the police departments, not exactly, we didn't have anything spot-on, so we intend to include it here, is that under 3C on the recommendation is that all personnel involved in the operation be readily identified as police officers. So, they're either in uniform or they have a jacket or they're some, some way otherwise clearly labeled as police officers, so there's no confusion when they do enter. Finally, under Item 4 there in our recommendation is to include a reporting requirement like we have with tasers and like we norm, like Chief Jolly instituted on his own recently with use of force. So, anytime there would be a case or an exception where knock-and-announce was exercised, Chief Jolly would specifically bring that to the board. Now, one thing I wanted to say is, I asked Chief Jolly when's the last time we executed a search warrant without knocking and announcing as per state law? And he said to his, his knowledge, not in his tenure, he went to the most senior officer that we had, who was probably one of our detectives, who's been involved in this sort of things, and he said in the last 26 years, he had not had an instance of where we had executed a search warrant without knocking and announce. So, we are, here we are at, you know, the intersection of what do we do and what would we like to see people do. And I, and as I said, we'd like to see people continue to do what they, they have done, which is be good police officers, follow state law when they do that. And I don't believe we're going to have any instances of where we're going to violate people's rights by not knocking and announce or do anything like that. Again, it comes a lot, some of it comes down to my personal feelings that this department is well-trained and professional and dedicated. They haven't given me anything, a reason to think otherwise in the last seven or eight years. So, again, I went through some of our other rationale. You know, we're making a single carve-out for one issue that hasn't been, hasn't been used in Patton Township, hasn't created an issue in Patton Township. It may become a valuable tool to the police at some point in the future, is probably another reason why to not, not prohibit it. And maybe I'll have, Chief Jolly can talk about that a little bit. But at the end of the day, I could find no great benefit to making the change. And it seemed in all, with respect to all things, it was better to beef up our training a little bit, revise our policy to include other things we talked about, and then move forward. And we have some other things that we'll need to talk about in the future too. So, that's where I'm at and maybe I'll just have Chief Jolly talk a little bit about, you know, how such a tool as Enter, Enter in this aspect might be valuable at some point in the future.
Yeah, certainly. So, obviously, we're talking about the destruction of evidence and the exception for the police to, to use that in lieu of knocking and announcing in the rule in, in the Commonwealth. And it might help maybe to kind of back up a little bit and give you a little perspective. And generally, we're talking about drug cases and drug search warrants. It's most of the time that you're going to see a search warrant is involving a drug case. Not to say that's the only case, but certainly it's, it's the majority of the cases we deal with are, are drug cases where we're executing search warrants. So, typically, those are with the Drug Task Force. So, that's a multi-agency task force that we have here in the county. Generally, we use officers from the center region, so Patton Ferguson, State College and Penn State. Sometimes it's all from in Spring. Sometimes it's all part in Spring are also part of it, and they supply officers as well. But there's a very thorough review and briefing that those officers do, and they kind of cover all of these things. They cover use of force, they cover deadly force, they cover the location, the amount of people we're expecting to see there, who the target is, who we're going to see, are there weapons involved? So it's a very thorough, detailed explanation of what to expect for these officers, because some people are coming in and haven't had any dealings with this case, so they don't know anything about it. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that there's obviously a lot of information that is discussed prior to our going and serving a drug search warrant. This isn't something where, you know, an officer gets a warrant signed by a judge, we get a couple patrol officers go hit, knock a door, and, you know, see what happens. It's very thought out, very well-planned every time that we do these. So in reference to the destruction of evidence specifically, our agency and the Drug Task Force is not interested in, you know, if somebody flushes a gram of weed down the toilet or marijuana, we're not worried about that. But certainly, at some point, a circumstance could come up, for instance, maybe it's a missing child case. And we come up to the door, and we're getting ready to knock, and we have a search warrant for this house to get evidence, because we believe it's going to lead us to this missing child. For whatever reason, this person is involved in this case. So we go to their house, and as we're getting ready to knock on the door, or we start to knock and announce, an officer who's looking, covering a window for their safety sees the target inside moving around, and then maybe taking a box of something and going over to a fireplace, and starting to throw things into a fireplace. We need to be able to get inside as quickly as possible to secure that individual, secure the evidence, to make sure that we're not losing something that could potentially lead us to a missing child, for instance. And that's just a, just a kind of an example that I just kind of pulled out of it, but it could be, you know, we would hate to be able to, not be able to have that exception for something as serious as a missing child, where, you know, maybe we can't prove that they're in imminent danger. So some of the other exceptions may not fall into place. If the child's not at that location, but we're going there to pick up evidence in order for us to be able to help track down. So we just hate for it to be taken from the toolbox and not be able to use that in the instance where we may come across a time and we need to use it. So that's kind of just a real quick example of why we would argue that we need to have that available to us.
That's the end of our presentation.
Thank you. So I'm, sorry, I'm flipping back and forth. So I think at this point, we're going to take comments from board members.
I think should get public input.
Oh, thank you, Doug.
Should note, we did have several emails that came in.
Yeah.
Yesterday, and over the weekend. There's the whole list of them.
They are included.
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 that have come in, plus Mr. Jones did provide a statement that he sent to the board earlier today, and I would expect that he'd like to speak to the board also.
So, yes, so comments from the public, please. Oh, and state your name and where you're from, or your address. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay.
That's okay. That's all right.
So my name is Terry Watson. I am from Patton Township. I reside in Hillside Avenue. So I'm going to provide sort of two comments if I can, if time allows. One, as a resident, but also I was asked to read a response from the State College NAACP. So, in those, so. First, I'll go with the NAACP, because it's a written statement, and it's easier to read than it, so. In regards to the no-knock warrant, the State College NAACP wrote a letter, and I'm just going to read straight from it itself. And two, unfortunately, my printer was broken, so I couldn't print it out, the hand over.
Yeah, send it to me when you get a chance.
Yes. So the State College, the State College chapter of the NAACP joins our brothers and sisters and chapters around the nation by firmly endorsing a ban on no-knock warrants. These warrants frequently carried out in the middle of the night have proven to be dangerous, usually resulting in excessive force, and have proven to be perilous to not just civilians, but to law enforcement as well. Since the inception 111 years ago, the NAACP has been an organization committed to protecting communities against discrimination, sorry, discriminatory violence and aggression. We are the nation's foremost widely-recognized civil rights organization that superheads the anti-Lynch campaign in the early 20th century, the civil rights legislation in the 50s and 60s, the anti-prowty campaigns throughout the decades, and in this contemporary era, we are striving to achieve equal protection and treatment under the law. We stand proudly with many other community organizers, organizations, and activists to do this work. Municipalities around the nation, particularly in the wake of Breonna Taylor's wrongful death, have banned no-knock warrants, and we encourage this township to recognize the need in this change in policies that do not align with America's pledge for justice for all. Aggressive militarization and overuse of force, which national studies have shown to disproportionately be carried out against people of color, have no place in our township and no place in our community, in our society, or in our society. In addition, policies like qualifying immunity make it so that police are rarely held accountable any time there's any killers misconduct. In central Pennsylvania, in the wake of Osasuna Sagi, tragic death at the hands of State College Police, the only police shooting death in the history, we recognize that we too are not immune to injustice, and therefore join the outcry for justice throughout the nation. Patton Township can stand with the State College NAACP to say, we need less militarization, we need less escalation of violence, we need less police brutality without impunity, and we need more police accountability. So that's sort of the statement from the NAACP. So now, as a resident of Patton Township, I've had the pleasure to actually work with Chief Jolly on a couple of things, and I do also believe that is a well-trained police department. And so I do agree with you there, Chief Duncan. One thing that I would sort of point out, too, is if we are looking at any policies to do with no-knock warrant, one thing we will have to keep in mind is that there should be some full representation across the board, whether you're dealing with any kind of policy that might impact communities of color. We are a, we are a, in central county, we are increasing diversity in our communities, but, you know, we want to make sure that everyone feels safe. And I do appreciate the presentation that outlined the difference between the no-knock warrant versus the no-search warrant, does two different things. And I also appreciate the breakdown between looking at drugs versus looking at child safety. It does remind me of a conversation I did have with a police officer after the Breonna Taylor case regarding the no-knock warrant. And again, this was a police officer, well, actually detective, that's from a larger city than ours, but his attitude was that some people just die. And I really, that's what stuck with me when I had that conversation, I want to make sure that we also keep that in mind that sometimes you want to make, you want to not just make policy changes to make policy changes. So thank you for that time. And again, sorry my printer was broken, but I understand, and they're going to email that letter to you.
If you can send that to us, we'll add it to the record.
Yeah. And I can't say for the whole thing, it's almost about not being ruled.
Thank you very much. Can you state your name again? And I know it'll be in.
Oh, yes, Terry Watson.
Terry Watson, okay, gotcha. Okay. I got that. Thank you, Mr. Watson. That was great. And I believe we have another member in the audience, Mr. Jones.
Hello, I'm Ben Jones. I'm a resident here in Patton Township. So I wanted to start off by thanking the township manager and police chief for their work reviewing department policies related to search warrants. I respectfully do disagree with the recommendation not to put in place a ban on no-knock raids. And the point where our proposals just diverge, specifically the question of whether officers should be permitted to conduct no-knock raids to prevent destruction of evidence, I would stress is it's not a minor, but a fundamental difference between the proposals. From my view, no-knock raids are an inherently dangerous tactic, and preventing the destruction of evidence fails to justify this tactic and the risks that come with it. Members of the Board of Supervisors expressed support for that basic idea over the summer, and I hope you will put in place a local version of Breonna's law that bans no-knock raids. It's important to stress that supporting this measure should not be seen as anti-police. Notably, a number of police officers in the United States have died during no-knock raids. Banning this tactic would help protect all lives when a search warrant is served, including officers themselves. In the, at least in the recommendation that went out from the township manager and the police chief, there were four reasons for their reluctance for a ban, and I'd like to address them. So the first was that it's already general practice for the Patton Township Police Department not to engage in no-knock raids, and that there doesn't appear to have been an instance of this in the last 26 years. And so I'm very encouraged by that, and I commend the township for not using this tactic, certainly with not any frequency. But I don't think that should prevent the Board of Supervisors from implementing a ban on the tactic. Doing so would ensure that what is general practice today remains policy going forward, even when police leadership changes. It would also clarify expectations for officers, promote accountability, and build community trust. One suggestion from the recommendations by the township manager and the police chief was to revisit the proposed ban, should there be a future incident that raises concerns. I have, I have concerns about taking that approach, and I think just sort of nationally, taking that approach has often led, oftentimes led to regrettable consequences. Since Ferguson in 2014, we haven't seen, nationwide, we haven't seen any meaningful decrease in killings by police. Oftentimes, when there is a questionable killing by police in the news, a common reaction by communities is that such an incident couldn't happen here. We're different. Our police are trained better. I think the killing of Osasuna Sagi last year by State College Police should dispel any false sense of security that we might have, that a questionable killing can't happen in our community. After Ferguson in 2014, there were many local initiatives to encourage dialogue between police and the community. Those are critically important, but there wasn't the same urgency to take a close look at police policies. The State College Police Department, for instance, had gone a century without a fatal shooting, and so the assumption was that the policy seemed to be working, and that they don't need to be changed. That long stretch without a police shooting provides zero comfort, however, to the Osagi family. To minimize the risk of such tragedies and avoidable police violence, we must be proactive in addressing and advancing tactics that unnecessarily endanger life, and I would count no-knock raids as part of those. And another thing I would mention, too, is that you're, the Board of Supervisors, you won't be making this decision in a vacuum. A decision to ban this tactic could impact other communities and push them to take a similar step. So a ban could have beneficial effects beyond just Patton Township. Another concern that was raised by the township manager and police chief was that it would create a, quote, create a select carve-out between Pennsylvania law and Patton Township policy. What I would point out is that Patton Township police policies already have a number of so-called carve-outs, if by this we mean local policies with requirements not found in state law. For instance, there's no Pennsylvania law banning police chokeholds, yet that requirement is found in Patton Township policies. And I doubt anyone here would want to get rid of that policy. That policy goes beyond the minimum requirements found in state and federal law, and for good reason. Because of the failure of the state and federal level to require police practices that prioritize the protection of life, it is all the more critical for local governments to take that step. In fact, organizations like the Police Executive Research Forum call on law enforcement agencies to do exactly that. Importantly, state law does not require police to conduct a no-knock raid to prevent the destruction of evidence, so nothing under proposed ordinance would go against state law. Rather, it would function similar to existing Patton Township police policy, banning chokeholds. It would put in place a common sense requirement that prioritizes the protection of life and exceeds the currently deficient standards found in state and federal law. Another concern was that putting in place a ban would require a change in training. My response would be, I don't think we should resist altering police training when it's necessary to address tactics that unnecessarily endanger life. In addition, if it's not currently the practice of local police to conduct no-knock raids, it doesn't seem like it would be particularly onerous for the, to put this policy in place. It would just make existing practice official policy. And then lastly, there is a concern that implementing a ban could impact Patton Township's participation in multi-agency operations like the Drug Task Force. This objection, I suspect, is driving much of the reluctance to a local ban on no-knock raids. If Patton Township implements such a ban, it is true that our police department will have in place a policy different than those of neighboring municipalities. That, however, is a virtue rather than a shortcoming of a ban. At this moment, it is critical to rethink how we as a community dedicate resources to public safety. Resources for mental health services and vulnerable populations are just as critical for promoting public safety, if not more so, as resources for police. Recently, a task force identified many shortcomings in mental health services here in central county that need to be addressed. I am thankful to all the officials and community members, including Chief Jolly, who worked on that task force and helped bring attention to these issues. But it's also disappointing that we as a community failed to dedicate resources to these measures before Osasuna Sagi was fatally shot, while at the same time managing to dedicate resources to the Drug Task Force. There's a growing consensus that treating drugs as a law enforcement rather than a public health issue has been an abysmal failure, and has done little to curb drug use without creating black markets that exacerbate violence and crime. Now, of course, federal and state law is largely responsible for this regrettable situation we find ourselves in, and local communities do not have control over federal and state law. But we do have control over whether to dedicate extra resources to drug enforcement, and given other public safety concerns, we should take a hard look at what extra resources we dedicate to drug enforcement, and ask whether these decisions reflect our values as a community. We shouldn't automatically assume that Patton Township participating in the Drug Task Force is an unmitigated good. And I'm still worried about the suggestion that we need no-knock raids as an option because the tactic might be necessary when participating in the Drug Task Force. Many deadly no-knock warrants and raids have occurred during drug investigations, with the killing of Breonna Taylor being just one example. That context, more than any other, is where we need a ban on no-knock raids by police. Patton Township can make its position on this policy question clear by passing an ordinance banning no-knock raids. That step may push other municipalities to consider their policies regarding no-knock raids and drug investigations in other contexts, which I think is all the more reason to implement a ban. And with regards to the kidnapping example, one thing I would stress is that the amount of time to wait is only 15 seconds. So it's not, you know, that's not a lot of time to be able to destroy, to destroy evidence. In closing, across the country, a number of towns, cities, and states are taking steps to ban no-knock raids by police after the horrific and entirely avoidable killing of Breonna Taylor. To truly honor her memory and ensure that such tragedies are not repeated, we must change the underlying policies and practices that lead to them. By implementing an ordinance banning no-knock raids, Patton Township can be a leader in Pennsylvania, an impetus for needed change in other municipalities. I urge the Board of Supervisors to show leadership on this issue. Thank you again for considering my remarks and for your continued work to review police policies.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for either Mr. Jones or Mr. Watson? I should have asked when Mr. Watson was up here, but we can direct questions or comments to either of them, or, and/or I can simply open up the discussion in general to board members, seeing that there were no other comments from.
It looks like Mr. Abrams has a comment.
Oh, thank you.
The only comment I have, actually, I agree with most of what was stated, but the, I don't like- I don't like the broad-brush treatment of saying, "ever since Ferguson," especially since we have a Ferguson township here, and some people might be confused about what it is. I mean, I know what went on there and how horrible the situation was, but I just don't like the loose, the language that can be, Mr. Turpin.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Chief?
Chief, I'm so...
Did you want to respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, real quickly...
I didn't even see your hand, Chief. Apologies.
I was kind of waiting, my turn.
No, just go like that.
And Mr. Dr. Jones, I'm sorry, Dr. Jones had brought up at the end there, the 15 seconds isn't a long time to wait. Obviously, a lot of things could happen in 15 seconds, but if 15 seconds is when we, as the police department, get the green light to go ahead and breach a door, if somebody's refusing to open their, their door, or whatever the case may be, and we now have to breach the door, you might as well tack on about another 15 to 30 seconds for us to be able to get inside, depending on the circumstance of the type of door, if we have to use a ram, something like that. So now we're talking, you know, maybe upwards of a minute until we're able to actually get inside and, and address this. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. You know, the other, the other, you mean, you know, me personally, I think that our work in, in drugs and drug task force is, is vitally important. We do have a detective who is devoted to it. You know, we had a couple overdose deaths last year, so I'm assuming the families of those victims would probably say that they wish that we had more officers devoted to, to the drugs. And definitely, it's a huge issue, and they work very, 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 very hard on, on trying to, to impact that the best we can. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other...
Farav has...
Oh, sorry?
Pam, Rob.
Thank you. I really, yeah. Yeah, please raise violently, wave, or say, "Madam Chair," and I will... Go ahead, Pam.
First of all, let me say thank you to Mr. Jones for his dedication and hard work. To Chief, and to Doug, thank you for all the information. But I'm, I'm kind of torn because I've just got the information that I'm reviewing. And the information that I'm reviewing, one of the comments that was made on a letter from the PTPOA stated that there are no, they were, let me see, it was stated, "They are no in agreement with the suggestion of Rule 207." It stands on a term to reasonable, and because there is a vast number of variables that can be affected and given on a situation. Another statement that it reads that it would be a short, it would be short-sighted and high, and hyper-sized that we could obtain a more desirable outcome on more consistent basis by placing arbitrary numbers of seconds into a known and announced rule. The statement, "A more undesirable outcome of placing arbitrary numbers of seconds in a knock, in a natural..." Seconds, what? Seconds can mean a peaceful transition or a fatal one. Seconds on both sides. In the response that was noted, and it's on record, officers to issue a search warrant at a residence with 7,000 square feet is quite probable that waiting 15 to 30 seconds may not be reasonable amount of time in fairness to the occupant. I know we went back and forth on this, and 15 seconds is, is not much time for a person that's upstairs and didn't hear the knock. We've been back and forth on that, Chief, I know, and I, and I, and I know it's not just Patton Township, it's across the board. But we have to address the timeframe of 15 seconds. It's, it's unreasonable. It really is for a person who has a disability. It's unreasonable for a senior. It's unreasonable for a person that is a hard sleeper and does not hear that knock. And we need to address it. The second thing that really, it really upset me from the letter that I heard, that I read from the PTPOA, it states, "For the mere appearance of propriety, that would be not dishonest, but be reckless and dangerous to the trusting relationship between the citizens and Patton Township." I don't think anybody on this board is taking a mere propriety appearance when we put together this resolution. I, I'm like, knowing you, Chief, without the uniform, you are a man of integrity. You are a man, you are a decent and caring individual. When you put that uniform on, you are an extraordinary police officer and leader, and the police officers that follow your norm. You are one of, of you that we can stand and say, "The policies that we're putting together here, you stand behind, you stand behind your officers, and you follow the rules and regulations." But there comes a time, through change, we wouldn't be talking about changes in policies that weren't on the books if it wasn't for Brianna Taylor and a few others that are unknown. So as we continue to review and research and talk to each other, through dedication, your dedication, Doug, also as our township manager, we thank you. And to this board who has integrity that I am proud to serve with, as we continue to work together with our community, we will make the ultimate change for the betterment of both parties. Our outstanding lease of Patton Township, and I say outstanding, to the community of Patton Township, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
I could just, real quickly...
Yes, Chief.
So, yeah, the, I agree with you, 15 seconds is not enough. As, and again, part of that briefing, again, one, one officer who...
There's no 15 seconds in the law, in the current law.
See, the current law, the case law says a reasonable amount of time. Generally, for us, depending on where we're going, again, that's, usually, we're waiting no less than 20 to 30 seconds. And again, if we're talking about a 7,000-square-foot home, that, you know, we're going there at 7:00 in the morning, and folks might be sleeping, we might give them upwards of almost a minute for, you know, for knocking and announcing, to make sure that we give them a reasonable amount of time to get their bearings and to come down and have the opportunity to surrender their property, rather than us damaging the door or something like that. So that, so I agree, 15 seconds is not a whole lot of time for certain structures. Now, there are other apartments that we go to downtown that might be your bedroom, your kitchen, and your bathroom in one room, and it's, you know, a quarter of the size or, you know, an eighth of the size of this room. 15 seconds would be sufficient for that. So, again, that goes to the, the homework and the scouting that we do prior to going, knowing about the location and, and getting that information to the officers so we're going to go out and...
And knowing something about the occupants.
Correct.
Yep.
And that goes, again, with what Elliot said on wording. What's reasonable? What, what do you think is reasonable? We, we, we can say reasonable could be one second, two seconds, to one minute, and I, I thank you for the one-minute piece. But the law is, they play games with the law. Words, reasonable, affordable. What's affordable? We, we tend to get caught up in, in, in the technology aspect of trying to figure out what does it mean if it's not in print. So I, Chief, thank you for the one minute. It makes a big difference. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Rob, and anyone else?
Anita.
Yes, Madam.
Anita, thank you. I thought you were, yes. Anita, please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have two major areas that I'd like to talk about. First of all, I agree with our township manager when he says that we indeed have a well-trained, professional, and dedicated police force. I think everyone on the board would agree with that, and I'm just very impressed with the amount of research and study and presentation that has gone into this effort by all the parties involved. I realize it's a very deep and complicated matter, and I appreciate how it's been presented. I thank you, the township manager and the police chief, for, for your work, and Dr. Jones as well. I wanted to start with something that I don't think is very controversial, but I did have a question on it, and I appreciate how it was presented, that you are recommending Doug and Tyler to revise the current policy in different ways and to create a standalone section in the policy section. And I wanted to speak generally about policies, because I understand, we know that policies, the primary audience for policies are the policemen themselves and women, that we don't have a woman, but our police force itself is the primary audience. And we know that the police know what they need to do. We know that they know the state law. But I would suggest that what we're doing here today in identifying these policies is that how people perceive what the police know is very important. It speaks to Doug's point that he raised earlier with the tasers, that he realized that the eyes of the community were on the police. And again, today, the eyes of the community are on the police. So my question and suggestion, for one matter, is as you look at page four of the police policy review and your standalone section, later on on that page, you speak about the current state rules for knock and announce and wait 15 seconds and wear a body camera and be identified at police. Were you intending in your standalone section to reemphasize those points, recognizing the police already know that? I mean, you could just say, "Follow all the Pennsylvania laws." The police know that, but the wider audience who want to know what the police know may find that helpful. If I could suggest, when you are promoting the standalone section, to actually take the wording that Dr. Jones proposed on attachment one, on his requirements for search warrants, the law, I won't go through them all, but number one, two, three, about what is in the, the state law, if you could actually repeat that. I realize it's repeating it, and the police will say, "Well, we already know that," but I think the broader community would like to know what it is that the police know. And I am suggesting and recommending that as you do your new standalone section on search warrants, and maybe you had already planned to do that, I could be saying something you've already planned to do, when you are including subsections on the knock and announce warrants and the exceptions, we, you know, could you include, for the public's benefit, a repeat of exactly which of the state laws here that our police departments are doing, since, as you note, that the procedures are already being followed under knock and announce and wearing the body camera and being identifiable, please, that's one point. Then I have a second point to make about the exception for the evidence, but I would like you to address that first, if you would, please.
Yeah, we, I, I can't tell you exactly what everything's going to be in the standalone section, but it will cover the items that are in the rule under Title 234. Now, wear a body camera is not under Title 234. There's nothing in state law that covers, like, wearing a body camera. So that's, that's another policy in this, in the police binder of policies, let me just say, there's, there's several. We could include that, but we do not just wear body cameras for search warrants. They wear body cameras all the time, and they're activated under almost any circumstance where they're interacting with the, with the public, or any time, and they're in a car and they turn the lights on, the car camera comes on, the body camera comes on. So body cameras is almost an afterthought for us in this issue.
Yeah, I would just note, too, that body camera, I mean, search warrant is one of the sections in the body camera policy. So that is addressed in the body camera policy that officers shall operate when they're on...
And, and these policies do not stand alone. You can't take Policy 1.2.3 out of the policy binder, the entire policy manual for police, and think you're going to train a police officer on search warrants. You need to gather the whole body of the policies together as one. So I, you know, can we add some additional language? Yes, but not every policy can cover every, every eventuality.
Sure. I, I think my point was, I think it's important for the public to know what it is that the police know, and to the extent that you might be repeating things, and the police would say, "We already know that," but if you could repeat them, there's great, there's great public interest in this, Doug.
I understand, and I, I think we can find some middle ground on that.
Okay. The second point I'd like to speak to, if we're ready to address that, in terms of some of the points you made on your expanded recommend, rationale for recommendation. And I appreciate the thought and the review that has gone into this. When you say that adopting the recommended prohibition will not change the expected behaviors of township personnel, and noting that for 26 years, they haven't needed to, they've been doing it one way, and I would, my perception is, perspective is, that past does not dictate prologue, that indeed, even though it's not been used in 26 years, to, I believe this prohibition will change expected behaviors going forward. And this is, again, not to criticize our current professional police at all. This is to say, this is the standard that we are embracing for the future. And if it indeed required a change in training, I don't see that as a negative. I see that if it's appropriate to change, you change. And for instance, what if three or four other townships were already changing? They're training, and we would be the outlier. Just because we are choosing to change training, I think we should change on the merits of the training itself, not on what impact it might have on others, because who knows what that might be? They may say, oh, they might look at that and say, "Well, we should revisit that as well." So whether this board approves the prohibition on going in for evidence or not, I don't think it, the argument that it matters about future training, I don't think that is the relevant case, and I don't think to say that it won't change behavior, I don't think that is relevant either. I personally support the position that has been advocated by Dr. Jones. Thank you.
By what?
By Dr. Jones.
Okay, you just sort of broke out, broke up there. Yeah. Thank you very much. Any comments?
My turn?
Yes. And, and I'll get back to Elliot, too, if he has additional comments. Go ahead.
This is difficult for me, because I'm, I see both sides. I identify with both sides. I certainly, personally, am in favor of everything that our police department has, has done and the training they've received, and I'm just echoing what everyone... training they've received, and I'm just echoing what every, all the compliments everybody else has said. I've always told you, Chief, and Doug, and that I'm a strong supporter of a good police department to citizens. That's what the citizens want. That's what we want. We want safe, to feel safe, and that our police department is taking care of us. So in that sense, my view is, a police department are guardians. You're guardians of the public. You're not warriors. I know that Camden Police Department, you know, started over from scratch, basically is my understanding. With that philosophy, they changed from a warrior-based culture to a guardian-based culture. And that's what the citizens want. So recognizing that, I think the, I agree with the recommendations, except for allowing no-knock entry if evidence, to prevent evidence from being destroyed. I think that is, that's where the Constitution draws the line, my interpretation, anyway. Destroying evidence is not in and of itself a threat. I know in your hypothetical example, well, what if? Well, if you allow this exception, it allows no-knock entry on a suspicion, and there may be nothing related to a safety of a missing child or something in that person's possession. So I bottom line, in this case, I agree with Dr. Jones. I think we should have a ban, no-knock entry in our policy, that there shouldn't be one of the exceptions.
Thank you, Dan. And I wanted to give Elliot a chance. Did you have anything addition to add? Mr. Abrams?
All it was, all it was, I have no idea who's right about this because I just don't know about it. And so I have to trust people that have studied the most, or our Chief and our Manager, because we don't do this every day. And the police department is involved with us, and it's heavy with the training. So to make a decision one way or the other, what do I base it on? I don't know.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure you'd have your full say.
That's all.
So if I got everybody in, I'll go ahead and add my comments. Want to make sure I did that. Yes, Chief?
Sorry, no, just real quickly to respond to the last part of your comment.
I apologize.
No, I'm sorry. So again, the case law does say, it can't, you know, we can't make entry just on a hunch or that we presume that this is going to happen. We have to have a level of at least reasonable suspicion that what we, why we're making this entry is actually occurring inside.
Which is why it rarely happens.
Which is why it rarely happens. Because it can't just be, in my gut, I think that that's what he's doing, or I think he's going to do this.
Even if you hear the toilet flush, that is not sufficient. That's case law.
That's case law, yeah.
Yeah, if you hear the toilet flush, that is not sufficient grounds to enter without knocking and waiting the appropriate amount. So as, just as Tyler said, if somebody's looking in a window and sees something happening, that would be grounds. Suspicion or a hunch or an idea, they're not sufficient grounds. And anything that would be found as a result of that entry probably would be suppressed by the court.
My point was that I think this particular exception to prohibit destruction of evidence shouldn't, should be not allowed in our policy.
We just want to clear up that officers aren't saying, you know, whether they had grounds or not, I thought something was going on in there, so we entered. But that's not happening.
I know. And I led you to say that, but by my choice of words.
Yeah.
So I understand that.
Okay.
Okay. And at the end, Chief, remind me to look at you. I'm so used to, I'm so paranoid I'm going to miss Board members, so I forget to look over to my right. I, too, have tremendous difficulty in this discussion and in the decision that is before us. And I don't know that I have so much a coherent set of arguments as a number of different ones that are, I'm slowly putting together. And my intent is, after this meeting, to go back and view, review what people have said, read and reread to have a better understanding of it. I feel like I'm still putting pieces together. But for me, what it comes down to is what we value as people. Life or, yeah, life is what I value. All lives matter. I understand there is a safety concern for police upon entering. If they have to knock and wait, they feel perhaps vulnerable.
No, no, that's not the case at all. There are exceptions. If they felt, but that's the law. You have to knock and wait.
Oh, I know what it was. I know what it, sorry. And I know what it was.
Yeah, I mean, vulnerability. There is an exception, which is very, again, very rarely used, but you must knock and wait in Pennsylvania, period.
And this is, thank you for that. And this is where I'm still...
And if officers don't think that that's safe, then they probably shouldn't be there executing a search warrant.
I think it was, and I thought I heard somebody describe, it was not a knock, but it was a justification for a no-knock, which was simply to enter. Because if you, if you knocked, it would, or it would give away your presence, and there could be retaliation from inside. So I am deeply concerned that not only should people within the House feel safe, citizens feel safe, but that any decision that we make as a Board does not endanger police officers in the completion of their duty. So I, and I don't understand fully the repercussions, all the repercussions of decisions. What I do feel, though, is that, oh, this loss, sorry. The, simply weighing loss of life versus preservation of evidence is not a simple two-item decision because, as the Chief has said, this evidence, the drugs, is a scourge on our community. I don't feel I have the data, how many lives are lost by drugs, how many lives are lost by no-knock entry. And I, I don't even think you can always do that comparison. It would be, you're not comparing apples to apples there. But there is an impact of not getting evidence that you want when you want it. However, unless there's a very clear connection between drugs, amount of drugs, and number of lives lost, potentially lost, hypothetically lost, I would still argue or weigh in on the side of safety of lives over preservation of evidence. So, and I think that is the main point of disagreement between the policies proposed by Chief Jolly and Doug Erickson and the ones put forward by Mr. Jones. I also want to address the existence of trust. We, citizens of Patton Township have tremendous trust for this police department. I do. And as I said, I've, I'm learning how sausage is made. That's not probably the best metaphor, but I'm seeing for the first time what goes on behind the scenes in police department. And the professionalism, the science, the training is remarkable in Patton Township. I have no doubt it's remarkable in many police departments. Surprised to say, I'm very admiring of the time and commitment and skill that goes into However, I'm also a white female, and it may not be an issue, race may not be an issue here in, as much in Patton Township because of numbers, perhaps, but we, that doesn't matter if we have 1% people of color or 5% people of color or 50% people of color or 99 or 100%. Every person in a community needs to feel safe. I don't feel that Patton Township police have done anything to make anyone in this community feel unsafe. However, I don't walk in the shoes of everyone in this community, nor do I walk in the shoes of a police officer. But I'm being asked with four other members to make a decision that could be a life-and-death decision. So it is weighty. I am still thinking on it. Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, please.
I just have a question for the Chief. I know I was asked to review along with a lot of other people.
Oh, it's Betsy.
One of the things that I think the Board has to consider, and when you look at your agenda, it's a little disconcerting to me that we're, and I'm not, by the way, casting any aspersions on anyone, but there are many players that play into this question. And I'm curious as to whether the Chief anticipates that any of the other bodies, and I'm not really necessarily talking about the police forces, as much as I am the District Attorney's Office and the AG's Office, because as you all know, warrants and other things only come to police after a lawyer has gone in front of a judge and made a case and received a warrant. And I'm not trying to question any part of that, but I would like to know from the Chief's perspective, how that, how this decision plays into the roles and responsibilities that they have as part of a broader group of people. So I know we're focused on our own police department and our concerns about our police department, but we need to understand that they play a role in an entire law enforcement community, and that, in that when we think of things like, for example, the Drug Task Force, and this is one of the issues before you, I don't think we can, I'm not sure everybody understands that those warrants are specifically served, and the Chief can elaborate, by just Patton Township police officers. And while I'm not discounting the conversation that you're having, and I think it's very important, I still believe that this is a broader community conversation that needs to be had across a broader area. And I, I become concerned, I understand we want to be out in front on issues, but I also think we need to understand how that puts us in a different light with respect to these other players. I'm just curious as to why we didn't get any comments from those other players, especially the District Attorney and the Attorney General's Office, because I think they are part of these warrants in many cases.
We did reach out twice to them, and I couldn't tell you why they did not respond, but they, we did not get a response from them.
I would like to respond that when I've discussed this topic with colleagues, one of the first responses, one of the first questions I get is, why are we not doing this through COG? Now, COG is the Central Region. But COG, the Central Region, does not have a police force. We have separate police forces, so we can't do that. But the average citizen has a response of, why are, why are we doing this township by I hadn't...
That's where the responsibility lies with the Board of Supervisors and the management.
Right. However, if this is having, if, I'm just trying to address what Betsy Dupuy is saying. Maybe I missed the point there, but...
No, no, I think you're right on. I mean, she, yeah, she wrapped the point. I actually have it on my sheet. It was going to be one of the last things I figured we would talk about or the last thing I'd want to bring light to. And Dr. Jones mentioned it, I believe, when he spoke as well. Yeah, if we do change our, our policy, you know, and part of the reason I think maybe why the District Attorney didn't weigh in, and I'm speaking on my personal opinion here, is, you know, that the law is what the law, the law's in place. So the District Attorney's Office isn't going to, you know, dictate what the policy in Patton Township is. He follows the law. So if something were to go to him for a charging decision, for instance, if an officer violated somebody, you know, doing something on a search warrant, and for whatever reason there was potential criminal charges, and went to the District Attorney's Office, he wouldn't necessarily be reviewing our policy. He'd be looking at what the rules of criminal procedure or the law says in that instance. But certainly, I think that there could be implications, dealing, the fact that we do rely so heavily on mutual aid in this area between, again, State College, Patton, Ferguson, and Penn State, specifically in the Center Region here, that if we have a different policy and different rules for our officers to follow, that could create some issues for us in some of the operations that we do, for instance, on the Drug Task Force, where, you know, they, they may see an officer from Ferguson may say, you know, hey, we're going to make entry because I just saw the person inside destroying evidence. And our officers may say, well, we can't do that. So, you know, that's just a real general kind of, you know, example, but that could be an issue. You know, the other thing I think to kind of consider is, when we're talking about training, so our officers, the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission dictates what training that we have to have every year. And that's in order for us to remain commissioned as a police officer. So we have to go through certain training from MOPAC every year in order just to remain certified as a police officer. And if we change, change our policy from what they're, and obviously generally, they're going to follow what the state law is. So if they specifically have a class in 2022 on search warrants, it's going to be whatever the rules of criminal procedure say, which could differ, again, from what we're potentially considering adopting here. So officers would have to learn and take tests and be trained on what MOPAC is saying, this is the law, this is what, you know, we're teaching you, this is what you should be doing in search, search and seizure, search warrants. But then, so in order to remain certified as a police officer, they have to take that training. But then, when they come back out on the street, our rules of, you know, our policy is different. So in order to avoid discipline, they may have to do something different than what they were trained by, by the MOPAC staff. So that's just another area that I think could cause a little bit of confusion for us. But definitely the multi-agency thing, I think, is something that could be a cause of concern. And I think if we were going to take a substantial step, that it would make things much easier if we did it as a, as a region. Yeah, definitely.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I guess it would be for the Chiefs. Given that this exception on when an officer believes evidence will be destroyed has not been utilized in Patton Township since 1994, if my math is right, 26 years ago would be 1994. It has not been utilized. So am I understanding that the Drug Task Force is utilizing it more recently? Or could you speak to that? And, you know, that it has not been used for the last 26 years, and yet we do have drug problems in Patton Township. Could you address that, please?
Yeah, and it hasn't been. I've talked to other members from other agencies that are on the task force. I didn't get a response, again, from the Attorney General's Office, who oversees and kind of conducts the task force. So, but in speaking to other members from agencies other than, outside of Patton Township, there's, they can't identify a time when the Drug Task Force has ever used, an exception to make an entry because they had reasonable suspicion that evidence was being destroyed. But that hasn't happened that I'm aware of.
And given that it hasn't happened, yet you still feel that if we should train differently, that will create a disruption to the Drug Task Force?
No, I'm just saying that if, if, if our policy is different than the other agencies who participate... who participate in the task force, that we kind of have a different set of rules to follow, when we go to do a search warrant, and it's with the drug task force, you have members from, usually represented just about every agency in the county. So right now, all of ours are very similar, if not verbatim identical, and most of them all refer to, again, Title 234, Rule 207 for search warrants. So that's why it's easy for us to interact and to cohabitate, kind of, in the mutual aid that we have right now. I'm just saying if we did change something, that could change things for our officers' participation on the task force, possibly.
Thank you.
Elliot has his hand up. Elliot.
Thank you, Elliot. Yes.
You're muted, Elliot.
Very glad that we're having.
There you go.
Muted.
Now we can hear you.
Okay. My condolences. This whole discussion is a new thing for me, because years ago, the, the stance that the board always took was that we didn't get involved in police matters, period, because it didn't, we didn't want to look like we were interfering in any way, so we just didn't get involved. And, but this discussion is very healthy, but it also raises a question, how do we discuss the issues that our solicitor just talked about on a, on a regional basis? The county's involved here, the state is involved, and so I don't think we really should do anything to make our rules different than for the, at least the other departments in the region, because I think it could be a morale problem. I think, why raise something that could cause dissension among the police, oh, well, we're forced to do this, and we're forced to, I mean, there are more important things to do than have those arguments, and yet the whole thing does need to be talked out.
I'd actually like to go back to the point that Mr. Jones brought up initially, or somewhere, that one of the reasons we're looking at it here now is because it's not being looked at at the state level, and in fact, there appears to be an issue with the way the state constitution is written. So we are attempting to right that wrong, or right that, rewrite, R-I-G-H-T, that misunderstanding, or misinterpretation, or poor writing. Did you want to, I don't know, I didn't know if Mr. Jones wanted to say something. So, change, yeah, I mean, change is hard, and, and yes, we do have to consider how this fits into the bigger picture, but I'm also looking at the bigger picture that I think needs, needs to change and tweak in certain ways, not because of Patton, not because Patton is the way it is, but because the world is the way it is. And I, I believe, and things can change. I'd like to be on top of it. As Anita said, the past is not prologue, doesn't predict the future. My, I guess my biggest concern, if we do ask to change policy, is we look at the, the track record the Patton Department has had in not having any mishaps with a knock and entry, or not having any need to have a no-knock entry. I think that's what I want, I'm going for. And Chief, you say you don't want to close off that opportunity in the future. So again, I think we're being asked to weigh what might happen in the future with what we see happening right now, not necessarily here in Patton Township, but again, a larger data, data field. And I don't even know if there is a lot of concrete data out there on how many of these, how many of the raids, how many raids go bad in comparison to how many raids or knocks entries don't go bad? How many deaths occur on the side of the, of officers? How many deaths occur on the side of occupants? We, we do hear celebrated cases, Breonna Taylor, but that's a very real case, and it's actually one of many that unfortunately happen all too often. Yeah, Chief, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no. So, safety, 100% of the time, is my main concern as well. I share that. Dr. Jones may have mentioned to that as well, for both sides, not just for the police officers, for, for the citizens that, you know, the subjects of the warrant as well. Nothing gives me more anxiety than officers going ready to go and serve a search warrant. I mean, it's, it's a very dangerous thing. It's got to be the top three dangerous things we do, right? Domestic violence, traffic stops, serving search warrant. It's inherently, it's dangerous, because even when we knock and announce, and, you know, maybe that person is, they know that we're there, and maybe they're going to get a gun, and, and, you know, who knows what they're thinking? So it's inherently dangerous. Even if we do everything by the book, knock and announce, wait a minute and a half, and then we make an entry, we don't know what we're going to encounter on the other side of that door. So, but, so safety, 100% of the time. Just personally, I can think of a couple instances, when I served on the drug task force, where we had individuals who we knew would be armed, or who had weapons associated with the case that we were involved in, and we would not push the issue. In Center County, we're very good. We have the resources. Again, we have folks that are devoted to drug investigations. So we would sit on the house and wait until we, we were able to get them to come outside, or they were going to leave to go to work, or whatever the case may be, and we would conduct a traffic stop or do something that we felt was safer in an environment where we can kind of control it a little bit better. So safety, 100% of the time, is definitely paramount for, for everybody that's involved in it. We don't want anything to go, to go badly, ever. And I could honestly, I could probably bring some of the narcotics officers in here and tell, let them tell you stories of times when they probably could have used an exception for destruction of evidence, or destruction of drugs. And again, I think I said it at a meeting back in the summer, when we go to serve a search warrant, the case is already made. We've already done buys, or we know, you know, so generally, we're going there to arrest the person, but then we get a search warrant as well for the residents to look for any other evidence that, that we can find, drug activity, money, whatever the case may be. But the case is already made. So here, again, as Doug had mentioned, just hearing a toilet flush isn't enough, but even if we're sitting there watching a guy dumping something down, we're not really as concerned about that, as we are safely entering, getting them into custody, and then, and then doing our job from there. So, again, safety is absolutely the priority. I would agree with that 100%.
I think we're at the point where we're probably talking about how we move forward.
Thank you. Yes, I think you're right.
You had mentioned some questions, Betsy, that you, we'll see if we can find any data related to the outcomes of, of no-knock entries. I can't, I don't know what's out there. I'm going, I'm going to have Chief, Chief dig into that. The other question, I think, is, how you want to proceed? Would you like to do some more public outreach? Mr. Watson had mentioned that, and his, that he thinks we could do, we could do a virtual type, type of town hall, where we just go out and get, the borough's been doing three different types of those here lately, on, on their oversight, their civilian oversight board. That might be a way we could, we could go out to the public and get more comments. That's an option that I'll put out to the board. The other is, are there other questions you'd like us to answer? And if public, more public outreach, you don't think is valuable at this point, and I don't really mean it that way, but if you'd like to move to a decision more quickly, we, do you want to see this in December, or would you rather think about this longer and bring it back sometime in January?
Whoa, any?
And we can do the public outreach at almost, well, almost any time. It probably, there's a period between Thanksgiving and December, we can probably get quite a few people, and then, you know, right around Christmas, we don't want to do it, but.
Right.
Probably sometime mid-January, we could do something also.
Any, anyone on the board want to weigh in? I'm, as much as I don't want to put this off anymore, I'm leaning toward mid-January. Maybe not. I, I just, I feel a little overwhelmed, but I know I've got a lot going on the next few weeks.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with January.
Okay.
You know, we don't have a consensus, from what I've heard from the five members of the board, so.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's urgent enough that we need to discuss it again in December, but we can wait till January. Do we have two meetings in January, or just one?
Oh, we have two. One's early on the 4th, and the next one's late, like the 28th or something like that.
Yeah, that one, I think that would be a place to put it.
So I mean, we could do a public outreach mid, outside of the board.
Yeah.
That would just be us reaching out to public and getting public input. You know, I'd say we just get the public statements. I would suggest that the board not be part of that.
Oh.
So we're getting statements for the record, and then you would be, we would provide all that to the board members later. I mean, if you want to be part of something, we could do that also, but.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I forgot to look over there. Pam, go ahead.
I just have a question that, where do we go from here? And in January, do we make the decision to do something instead of meeting, hearing? We've heard, what, from the community? I truly thank Betsy, our solicitor, for the insight of the other players. So in January, when we meet in January, where do we go from there? Do we make a decision to do something? Or do we continue on with trying to wait? Trying to wait till there is an issue? It may not be in Patton. It may be another Breonna Taylor issue that pushes that envelope to do something. So I'm in agreement to January, but in January, let's make a decision.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, thanks, Anita.
As, as I've tried to absorb our discussion, and I thank everyone for the thoughtfulness of your comments, it appears to me the discussion has somehow moved to a focus on the county drug task force. If that is indeed the case, then we need to have a presentation from them at the January meeting. If one was seeking to put something on the table, I would put on the table a motion that, and it could be well voted down, that we adopt a policy that would be along the lines of not allowing the exception for the collection of evidence. Now, I realize that might well be voted down, but I think we need to deal with this question. And my sense is that, as, I heard the comment, there has not been a consensus among the board, and I agree with that. I kind of heard a 3-2 split, but, you know, without putting it on the table today, I think I agree with Supervisor Robb, we need to, to look at taking action or not. And I would suggest that that be put on the table for a vote in January.
I agree.
You're saying that we would have, that we would make a decision? You're not making a motion today, you're saying that you're advising that we have a motion in January.
Well, if I did, I don't know how, I have a sense there might be a 3-2 vote in favor, but I am sensitive to the comments that have been made from those who want to think about it more, or to explore other options. But I think definitely in January, we should be having a vote.
Well said. I mean, yes, now I understand. I agree.
I agree with you.
Okay. So we will revisit this in January?
Okay.
At our Jan, second January meeting, not at the reorganization meeting.
And we'll put together some sort of public outreach to.
That sounds good. Okay, great. Oh, let's see, we haven't, the rest of the meeting to go through. Getting so caught up in this. We are now on to the, yes, item, Public Works, No Items, Planning and Zoning, and we need to hear from, take it from Ms. Tease, on her proposal, or, yes. Please, take it away.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure if, Nicole Pollak is also online, and I would invite her to join in this discussion. Nicole and I met following the November 2nd Planning Commission meeting. A little background, as you may remember, in last month, our supervisors looked at a preliminary proposal for forming a housing task force in 2021. The Planning Commission considered that preliminary proposal in its November 2nd meeting, and endorsed it, and referred it back to our board. Nicole and I have met since then to streamline the proposal to bring before you today. The purpose of the Housing Task Force would be through a series of monthly, I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm hearing an echo, let me turn this down a little bit, through a series of monthly Zoom educational meetings to explore all aspects of housing needs and possibilities in Patton Township, and with the goal of bringing a report to the board and to the Planning Commission at the end of 2021 or early 2022, both a vision statement and some recommendations for action. Nicole and I were in on a Zoom meeting this afternoon with the Center County Housing Coalition, Center County Affordable Housing Coalition, and a number of their planners are willing to participate as members of this task force, and to work in, with Nicole and I and the citizen members to explore not just housing in Patton Township, but looking at it in the context of national trans, housing is a national challenge, a statewide challenge, a county challenge, and how does Patton Township's situation fit in the greater context of that? So you received as an addendum, the proposal of how we would propose structuring this task force, with, Nicole and I would like to be named co-chairs of it, with a number of housing and planning, and town, planning professionals and township representatives, and then a system to advertise and invite applications from resident representatives. And Nicole and I have already started drafting a, a potential application form that we'd like to work out with Doug on that, with the goal, if Supervisor Robb and Supervisor Abrams would be so willing, that as the wonderful co-chairs of the ABC Committee, when residents apply for these resident representative positions, if the two of you could kindly look at their applications and, and choose one. So that is the sense of the proposal. I would ask Nicole to also share her thoughts on that.
I think the only thing that I would really add to what you said, or to the attachment document that is with the HMO materials, is to just really emphasize that we're looking at researching the need for what Patton Township has for different types of housing, and really building kind of that educational and community support element, so that we're a little bit farther ahead with all of that, trying to figure out different ways to approach the housing needs in the township. So I think this will be a good way. So, I think this will be a good way for us to get a lot of different entities involved that, as Supervisor Tiff mentioned, we would like to get some developers, and some people from the business community and the financial things, as well as residents altogether, to be talking about what our situation is, and come up with some recommendations to present to the board on what we could do for the future. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm sure we can help answer them.
I think it's a wonderful idea. And I think the main question I'm looking for right now is somebody to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
To, because establish, saw Elliot, yes. Establish it as an ad hoc committee to begin in 2021. So, Elliot, I take it you are making that motion? And I need, I need a second?
I don't know, I don't know where to come out, but it's great that Anita and Nicole have taken.
I can't understand. Sorry.
Can you speak up, Elliot?
I'm glad that Anita and Nicole have taken on this work. And I think that we have, we have to find out more information, because it's a problem that hasn't been solved, and it's a problem that probably we can help solve. And so, let's go ahead and do this.
Great.
Thank you.
So, I think. Somebody seconded it?
Yeah, Pam.
Thank you. Okay. Pardon my ears. All those, any more discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. We will see this new committee in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're on to administration, yes, mostly about the Authority Board and Commissions Committee. We've got several people who are up for reappointment, and they have all agreed to be reappointed. I'm not gonna read the names. They're all listed on the agenda.
I have one correction.
Oh, great.
Mr. Mark Parfit for the Catta Board. This is actually, would be his first full five-year term at your point. He served a partial term.
Oh, okay.
To start.
Gotcha.
He taught that and reminded me.
Great. So, that'll be checked.
He was correct.
And then, there are four vacancies to be filled, and I'm gonna name those, because somebody listening might be interested.
Don't we need to?
Yep, we need a motion to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make those appointments.
I'll move we, reapprove these appointments to the ABC.
Do we have a second approving these appointments?
Second, Pam.
Okay, great, thanks. Any more discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Great. So, the ayes have it. So, welcome back on board to the people who have already submitted that they're interested in returning. There are four vacancies to be filled. One Planning Commission, that's a seat that serves for four years. One seat on the Recreational Advisory Committee, a seat that serves for three years. The Zoning Hearing Board alternate, one seat serves a partial term, filling out that term. And then, one alternate on the Spring Creek Watershed Authority, that seat serves for one term. So, we have a number of applications that we've already received. The heads of that committee, Pam, Rob, and Elliot Abrams, will go over those applications we have so far, but there is a draw for more.
We have several. I'll reach out to Pam and Elliot tomorrow and start scheduling some interviews. Hopefully, we'll have maybe some appointments to make at the December meeting.
Great. So, thanks. I don't think we need any.
No, no action needed.
No action there. We're gonna go on to the consent agenda. I understand that we should pull the minutes, because Mr. Trevino has an addition to make. So, do we approve the consent agenda first, or do we pull the minutes?
However you want to.
Okay, let's approve the consent agenda without the minutes.
So moved.
A second? On approving the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Okay, well, there was somebody seconded that. All, any more discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We've pulled out the minutes. So, Dan, do you want to make your addition?
Yeah, on the, our last meeting, which was October 28th, the page five of the minutes that were handed out in advance, the item 7B2, the review of policy on reappointments, I just wanted to add, down there where some board members are making comments, that Mr. Abrams, Mr. Erickson, did say that any members whose term has expired can reapply for membership on the committee after they sat out one year. So, I thought that was an important thing to include in our public record.
Thank you for that. It was a good, good addition. Oh, and, oh, actually, I guess we need to approve. Can I have a motion to approve change of the minutes?
So moved.
Reflect that. And any second?
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. So, we've got an amended set of minutes that have been approved. That brings us to, whoops, Managers' Report. Yes.
We only had one item under correspondence, as a result of the first review of real estate appeals. There were several that were denied. They were, they were claiming catastrophic loss. There's no denying that hotels have been impacted, but the catastrophic loss that the state law looks at does not cover that eventuality. Now, there is some movement in the state legislature to provide, perhaps provide some temporary relief on real estate appeals for businesses who've had large losses in this last year. But that is still pending with the legislature. There will be a few, there are a few cases, those are the ones that were labeled deferred, that could potentially end up in Florida Common Pleas this, this spring. But we'll keep working with the Assessors' Office on those. Other than that, we had the schedule, Township Office schedule that we've looked at several times later, lately. Again, household hazardous waste collection is this weekend. Last I heard, there were still a few spots left. But get in and preregister quickly, into my report.
Okay, great. Thank you. We now come to committee reports, and I'm just gonna read the committees and those that have submitted a report. The Public Safety and the Public Service and Environment. There was a report submitted by Supervisor Rob. Mr. Trevino submitted a report from the Finance Committee. The Climate Action Adaptation Committee. Sorry, I'm getting tired here. That report has not been submitted. That was my oversight. We met on Monday. The, Elliot, do you have a report for the Executive Committee?
That, that meeting hasn't happened yet, actually.
Okay. And Solar Power, working, actually, we did not have a meeting on this morning, but we do have a meeting on December 9th. That was changed. I forgot to tell you that. And then, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, there is a.
They're meeting as we speak.
Oh, right, thank you. That's agenda closed, agenda enclosed. So, this brings us to the last item before adjournment, but it's an important one tonight. So, I was contacted by Supervisor Rob, who wanted to make a statement. Before she does that, I'll ask if there's any other, any other, other business to be brought up. And then, I'll give the, the mic to Supervisor Rob, give the floor to her. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. Last week, we thanked veterans and their families for the service of our country. Today, I would like to thank those I call the unstun heroes and heroes who are battling an unseen enemy called COVID-19. To the medical staff, doctors, nurses, technicians at Nap Lythley Hospital. To the EMTs, fire police officers. All the nursing homes and assisted living caretakers. To all the restaurant fast food workers, retail and grocery store workers. Bank staff, and especially to the educators, the teachers. Finally, to those working hard on the COVID-19 crisis. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Patton Township manhood and staff for their dedication and commitment to serving our community. Thank you. And can we have a moment of silence for the many workers, friends, and loved ones we have lost during this crisis? Finally, there are no words enough to thank all of you for all the risks you've taken and have taken. Also, the sacrifices you have made. We cannot be more thankful to you, as we acknowledge you today and every day. Thank you all, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A good way to end. And with that, we do have one final motion, and that would be for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So done. We're adjourned.